All right, welcome. It is October twenty-third. We are not going to minutes, minutes have not been sent out and still being generated.
You're like.
There's still being worked, you know, so the next meeting will approve all sets of minutes. We had. Do work sessions this weekend.
Yeah.
It's.
Regment asked a plan.
And. Re-rolax. Anything scheduled for the next one?
Not yet.
Not at this moment? Okay. First up on our agenda this evening is finalization of subdivision for sixty-five forty-two Woodchuck Hill Estates. Have there anybody present online? With that one?
Yes, good evening. Uh, Mike Fogel, I'm the attorney uh for the applicant um. As you noted, we're we're seeking a final subdivision approval tonight um. Since the preliminary approval was was approved, the client's been very busy um getting the site ready for construction. Um, all utilities have been installed at this point. The site's basically ready to go. Um, we submitted a final subdivision plan and as-built survey as part of our application, which uh looks like pulling up now. Um. The latest revision date, the ten-six date on the final plan um includes changes that we made in response to comments received from uh the town engineer. Um, I believe he's at this point signed off on it. Um, I think we've addressed all the all issues um. Or a couple revisions that we made, but otherwise um, seeking final subdivision approval. Now, we're in the process of finalizing um the road dedication um, working with Matt and Anatoly on that. That's obviously in front of the town board um, and the town board's also got to sign off on our stormwater easement, which Matt's approved in form. So those two items um, you know, still need to be approved by the town board. What we were hoping for tonight was that the board would um consider voting uh to approve the final subdivision plan um, kind of contingent on um us finalizing those couple items with the town board, and that way, once we complete those items with the town board, um the planning board could chair could just sign the final subdivision plan, and we wouldn't have to come back to the planning board. So that's what we were hoping for tonight.
Can you confirm for me the date on there? You said ten-six before? Is it ten-six or ten-sixteen?
It should be if you scan down. It's there. Can we blow it up? The revision data on the subdivision.
It gets ten-six, but it's kind of small in the version I'm looking at. Yeah, ten-six.
Okay.
And six. The house numbers were added, and uh we added the monuments in response to comments from Mark.
Just wanted to confirm.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think Mark's looked through it. Uh, no additional comments from him. Uh, you're good.
Yep.
Everything you need, so I don't think we need anything else at this moment.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? I I'm gonna put forth a motion to approve the final subdivision plan dated ten-six twenty-twenty-five with the following findings and conditions. This board finds as required by the subdivision regulations of the town of DeWitt. The final subdivision plan entitled Woodchuck Hill Sub- Woodchuck Hill Road subdivision Town of DeWitt, Anadog County, New York, dated three twenty-twenty-three and last revised ten-six twenty-twenty-five by Seegun Lynn Surveying D L L C and substantially the same as the preliminary subdivision plan approved by this board on and on get the date on there.
Oh.
We'll get the date added to that one with the last approval. And accordingly, no further secret review is required, and the matter is exempt from Anadog County Planning Board referral. Uh, the chairperson is authorized to sign the plan upon completion of the following and review by the planning board attorney. Completion and filing of the road dedication deed after approval by the town board and town board attorney. Confirmation that securities have been posted with the town as approved by the town engineer. All utilities have been dedicated to the town and appropriate deed and or easement has been filed with the county clerk. Further condition that the app must file the subdivision map with the Anadog County Clerk Office in accordance with the rules of Anadog County and provide a copy of the stamped filed map with the town of DeWitt Department of Planning and Zoning. A motion to approve. Um, Kevin, all in favor? Good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. All right, we have associated builders and contractors up next. Welcome.
Hi.
Work update and.
The architect for the client, uh, QPK Design. Seeking uh permit approval for reciting um ABC. We submitted the stamped drawings. Uh, we brought samples.
We've kind of gone through this um.
Chris, sorry. No, it's Christopher Burdick.
It's Jeff Alfred, right, ABC. So the only thing on this, on the front one here, you know, we asked that all the siding come off or all the signage come off. There's, that's the only one that's left on there. I don't think we had any other further comments on this one. I think I've addressed what we're looking for. Material wise.
I'm sorry. Material wise, we brought the metal panel and the color samples.
Did that have the profile or some.
Color. Other than the fact that it's got a boss, we we intended to be smooth. That's that's how this.
Um, and you recognize that part of this approval, no signage.
Right.
Approved.
Correct.
All for the areas uh to be removed up there. Look at any signage right now.
Signage or some later.
Yep.
So are you actually looking for us to remove it from the rendering?
Well.
I didn't know that signage would be by separate permit.
Yes, and so it it one of the comments we had before was still shown on the other elevations. The only place it shows up right now is just on that. That perspective on the cover sheet.
It just resubmitted them.
We're just gonna note that no signage.
That's right. Appreciate it. Yep.
On there. Any other questions from board? Uh, but for the motion to approve the architectural drawings and cut sheets last dated ten-nine twenty-twenty-five, following findings and conditions. This matter is exempt from the Anadog County Planning Board referral. This board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated eight twenty-four twenty-twenty-five and finding no significant adverse environmental impacts from the project grants a negative secret declaration for this unlisted action. No changes except the architecture. No changes except for the architectural. But the building are being made to the site, which consists of removing existing siding and replacing with metal panels and fiber cement panels. Accordingly, the site plan as previously approved and existing is in full portion effect. This approval is made.
To say in here and no signages.
Yes. Further condition that no signage. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning chairperson, and the applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to Anadog Code Section one two dash one twenty-two. I will make a motion in a second. Kathy, all in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just to be clear, you will have to apply for a permit for this.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up on our list is Resident.
Want to say that the date of that prior approval for the prelim was two eight twenty-two. Home Woodchuck.
Okay. Residents in, ambient signs. Everybody online?
Hi, this is Nan Patel. I'm representing residents in.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, no further updates to this one. I think we've looked at it a couple of times, talked about it. Uh, there are no further questions and just gonna put forth a motion to approve. Motion to approve the site plan dated ten fifteen twenty-twenty-five with the following findings and conditions. This matter is exempt from the Anadog County Planning Board referral. This board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated September ninth twenty-twenty-five and finding no significant adverse environmental impacts from the project grants a negative secret declaration, some listed action. This approval is limited to the replacement of the canopy at the front entrance and the replacement of existing signage above. Above the entrance door and modification of the monument sign.
And I believe doors.
And the door.
Or the replacement of the front door under the canopy.
Yep. Any prior site plan approvals for this site are in full force and effect and unmodified, except as specifically set forth herein. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant, and requires that all the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Or changes, additions, or deletions to the work. More materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review, which is on Anadog Code Set one nine two dash one twenty-fifth. Motion to approve. Bill, Kathy, all in favor? Great. Thank you. All right. Next up, Citizens Bank.
Hello.
Hi Paige.
How are you doing?
Good.
Get square today.
All right, so Citizens Bank. I think this is another one that we've looked at, comfortable where they are at this point.
Um, see the monument sign that they changed.
Yes, well, yeah, let's just pull that up.
Trees.
Yeah, the tree is staying, right Paige?
It's staying. We're gonna go green. I'll just trim it up a little bit. Yep, it's gonna stay.
Not even that close to the.
Yeah, it could use a shaping. That's.
It's just, just a little haircut.
So it was a cloth or. They do a dog.
Little bouffant.
Sounds a little bit sensitive, but feel normal right now.
Yeah. Those are the updated time. Wider than it is tall. Bits within the all the requirements are good, dimensionally good. Number and everything works.
Yes.
Good. All right, with no other questions or comments.
I would beat up those six, seven, seven zero numbers a little.
I don't think that you you may not have their font. I it's it doesn't look that skinny, I promise.
Just if you wanted. That's my only opinion.
Yeah, their font isn't that thin. I think it's just not reading on the.
Yeah.
The font's not reading.
Okay. All right, motion to approve the site plan as presented last dated ten twenty twenty-twenty-five with the following findings and conditions. This matter is exempt from the Anadog County Planning Board referral. This board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated seven twenty-one twenty-twenty-five and finding no significant adverse environmental impacts from the project granted negative secret declaration for this unlisted action. The existing site plan for this site is modified only to the extent set forth in the site plan dated ten twenty twenty-twenty-five, which includes painting of the building standing and trim, but not the brick, updating the signage, painting, building exterior, banding and trim, updating building and directional signage, and installing a monument sign. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents. As uh. See, I got my finger it over. I don't read it twice. Uh, that have been signed by the planning board chairperson, and the applicant requires that all work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work and uh or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to Tom DeWitt Code Section one ninety-two dash one twenty-two.
I just have one question whether or not to add it to the resolution, but I think this is a graphic thing. The base of this monument sign, the brick coursing shown is clearly just maybe some laziness with the drawing. I just want to make sure that's not. It's gonna get. And.
Yeah, it'll match the brick on the building.
Not, I don't mean that. It's.
The size, like the color.
Yeah.
So the the brick dimensions that are shown on there are not actually true brick dimensions.
Like you get little pieces left over on the corners, and that would be the worst thing ever. So I just.
We can now Mason's gonna put it.
Yeah, we're gonna have a Mason do it. Um, we. We won't use baby bricks, I promise.
Some people are literal, that's all.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you better tell your Mason. We did for all this. We want you to put it in a typical.
So yeah, just make sure that the the brick would match in the building, that it is dimensionally laid out to bridge coursing. Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yep. Um, quick question, just to make sure I know next steps. I assume once I get a written resolution, I need to go in for building.
Right.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm gonna finish.
Yeah.
But we gotta vote still. You gotta get the approval. Uh, motion to approve, Kevin, Kathy, all in favor? Great.
Now you can apply that and do it.
You you don't have to.
Yeah.
Paige, you don't have to wait to receive the resolution. You could apply as early as tomorrow as if you'd like.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. The other question I had was the GC's kind of chomping at the bit to do the painting before the weather turns. Is that something I need to wait for the for the written resolution for it to engage him to do that?
Yeah, I mean.
That would be covered under the permit, so once you receive the permit, you'll be good to paint. So so the.
Okay.
Permit will be your your limiting factor, not the written resolution.
Okay.
But the permit around definitely less than two weeks, probably less than a week. So we're just, you get it pretty quick.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige.
Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. All right, we have Dunkin' Donuts up next. We have Dunkin' Donuts. All right. So what's in front of us right now is recommendation in Z B A for the signage. Um, what I think we're finding, as you see by all the books and paper here, is that we still need to get a handle on what was previously approved, what the request was, um, and exactly what you're asking for.
Is as far as what we're asking for.
Oh.
We know what you're asking, what you want. We're just trying to figure out how it relates to what was previously approved.
So.
Or not.
The the structure that is shown in the drawings is existing, has been existing, uh, the structure and the panel of the sign itself are not being changed. That is classified as well. That's why we're.
Yeah, so the.
So it's basically just reskinning of the already existing, the previously existing sign that's been there since I'm two thousand.
That is, that's part of it. So what we're looking at right now is the previous variance that was in there was only approved for a six-foot tall sign. I think you know this. It's now taller than that. So that's something that we're trying to figure out in here. It was also approved for smaller on the face of the sign. It's now larger. So we're, you know, figuring out all of that. So the I we can have the discussion here and talk about kind of its current status, but just so you know, the next Z B A meeting is what?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of November. So getting a recommendation from us today is not critical, so we can, we can have the conversation today, figure out all of the the back stuff that we need to figure out, and at the next meeting get a recognition, which is the night. Six. November sixth, we meet. So it's.
The plan.
The planning board, and as we can still get a recommendation in ahead of the next Z B A, so it's not gonna hold anything up, stop pushing any further. But we're gonna do our diligence now, so the word, we're making the correct recommendation to Z B A. So.
So on my end, is there anything you'd need extra from me at this point, or does it just?
It's internal at this point discussion. I mean, I think we know that sign has been out there since two thousand one it was built, right? Um. You know, I we've all seen it. It doesn't been there. Nobody's complained about it. Um. I think we just need to kind of look at how that looks in the neighborhood. You know, the what was it, two thousand twelve was the other date that all of the signage had to come into compliance, and right now it's certainly not in compliance. Um, so that's part of the recommendation that we need to make.
I mean, it it's an, it's an interesting animal insofar as pylon signs are no longer permitted in this, in the town. Um, and this is a pylon sign because it doesn't hit anything on the bottom, holding, you know, any any kind of base. Um. It, when the code was redone, there was a three-year sunset and pylon signs came down, but.
You mean actively named or supposed to come down?
Oh, yeah, within three years, but this is not something that like is the kind of pylon sign I think that that people were looking at, which were the flower power signs, and and they're very high because it's it's sort of a hybrid because it has the two posts. So I'm I'm just gonna pass around what was approved, so you guys can look at it. Um, and.
That's from two thousand one?
This is the two thousand one, so. That's, that's what was approved then.
And does this does this reflect what was approved by the Z B A?
Yes, the various, the various approval that we have here was for that sign on a two foot by six foot or two, two by, two foot by six foot.
That's all it is. It's just that little corner. Um.
The upper left corner.
But it wasn't installed like that, right?
It's installed taller than.
Yeah.
And that's it. So it's now eight foot two.
I don't.
Yeah, like what we have in here is eight foot, so it's two foot two taller.
And it's kind of a.
And the.
And it doesn't have the two a grown height.
It does. It's just, it's two foot two taller. And then the size of the the sign was approved at thirty-one point eight square feet, and it's now thirty-six point one. If I have my numbers correct.
It's, it's really just the corner there. It um, it for them.
You know, has the building ownership changed since two thousand one?
I have nowhere.
I'm talking with a.
Are you with the architect or the?
I'm with the general contractor.
Obviously.
Who's that?
Bridget Gardner.
The equipment that we have to kind of you know. Date through right now are all of our dates getting stuff from. Sunset.
Right.
To put it. Um. And then in general. Yeah, what our thoughts are on making a recommendation. So I'll put it up for this guy.
Yeah.
Well, on our notes here, the twenty square foot monument signed to thirty-six square feet is a, oh, I mean, it's almost double.
So it it was granted variance to allow for a thirty-one point eight square in two thousand.
That's sort of like an, it's an increase.
An increase of the variant. Yeah.
So thirty-one point eight and it's at thirty-six is.
But sorry, that's what I'm saying. So I think our our variance.
I mean, the, is it true that the variance is really saying that we're asking, they're asking for relief from the previous variance and the current.
Anything that.
Like two things we're saying.
Well.
It's not longer compliance with our current code, and it's not a compliance with the variance. We're asking for something further.
Right, so I think what we're saying is anything that we make a recommendation on.
Yeah.
Is going to void out any previous variance approval.
Right.
So the consideration that we need to look at is what is it between the point square feet and what it is now. But taking into consideration that it had been there in generally its current size for twenty-five years.
Um, that would kind of my like is that in a lot of ways, this is a variance issue. This is an enforcement issue. Like it just, it was just never enforced per the approval. And it was just never picked up, but I, I'm not sure that's a precedent we want to set. That's my opinion.
Conversations would would gain me beforehand around this, the variance process is site specific. So it's not a precedent setting decision, because we can still look at any other monument sign that comes in on an individual case by case basis.
Maybe the precedent is that we've got we've got a, an installation that's not in conformance with the variance, and we're saying that that is accepted, uh, as long as you get another variance.
Right. Right, or or looking at, yes, I mean, would would this kind of a variance be granted for?
Well, I mean.
If it came in fresh.
If it came in fresh, would we, would we say that this is something we would approve?
I don't think so.
I don't think either.
Cause it's like double. That's what I'm saying. Like it's almost double the size of what we would have.
So then I would say to myself, okay, now, we wouldn't prove it today, but it was existing and it was approved before. But wait a second, it wasn't approved this way before.
But it was bigger, like if they did nothing, like if it was, if if it was sitting there and it had the variance and it was a couple feet lower, everyone would be like, okay, fine. Um. No, I I I hear that. But the other thing I I guess to consider is you know, why wasn't it in, I I why wasn't it enforced, right? Because.
Because there were no steps for the last.
No, 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 this is from two thousand since this, so the code changed in two thousand and eight, right? So is it because it doesn't look bad? You know, it notices and it's, that's, that's more the thinking that I'm, that I'm going with. It's like just, but if, but all those big lollipop stands, signs, they're gone. There are no more in the town.
And we allowed this to exist the way it is. Is it possible legally to have a sunset on that area, and so it could never be done again on that property?
No.
No, the variance run through the plan. So how does this slope, it looks like some property slopes downward. So how's that affect the height? Technically, it doesn't change it.
Well, right, but it was, you know, it was a steep hill. It was only six feet high when you see it, so I was on top of it, right?
So when you come around the corner, the sign doesn't look as high as it actually is because it's down.
Correct.
In a little bit.
Yeah, it looks like it's a.
Yeah.
It looks like a, a quite system. May- maybe that's why the original variance was sort of that, right?
Those are all considerations, right?
Mm-hmm.
And or this town, this board doesn't need to recommend at all. If if there's not a reasonable consensus, consensus, and if you just go to the Z B A, the Z B A can make their argument. But that's something we can discuss.
So all they're looking for now is not to change the sign except for the wording on it.
Correct, the face, just reskinning the face.
So although.
Click on the, yeah, yeah, I got it. Click on the, yeah, yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
You're at a bad angle there.
It's eighty four.
I'm, I'm.
What's on the sign face right now is. Correct, because they're changing their brand names.
Well, no, it, it, it actually says drive-through Dunkin' Donuts currently, and on this, it just says Dunkin' Donuts, so.
There's not normies everywhere, yeah. Right, so it was changed at some other point.
Well, there would also be an architectural variance insofar as it's a pylon.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Look, look at the hedge behind it, it's on the other side, right?
But.
That hedge is.
The hedge, it.
Yeah, I mean. So I think those are the, those are the considerations I think that we're gonna. Talk about, and I, we need to just. Get all of our dates and ducks and everything in a row. So.
So is the next time that you meet and discuss this, your due diligence between now and the next meeting, is the next meeting, the last meeting before the next planning board meeting? CBA?
BBA.
Is that the last ZVA meeting before the next planning board?
Yes, that is, yep.
So planning board meets next on November sixth. The ZVA meets on the seventeenth, planning board doesn't meet again until the twentieth. Hey, Randy, can I see that again?
Well, not what you're concerned.
I don't know. I'm, I guess, it's, it's, I guess, from the time, in all reality, from the time that I submitted this for this ZVA. That due diligence, as it was called, was not done. I guess before this meeting where I was supposed to have some direction when I left this meeting, like I. Uh, just that we almost.
Well, I mean, the, the direction, I mean, regardless, coming out of this meeting, it. Wouldn't matter whether we made a recommendation today or in two weeks, because the ZVA doesn't meet until the seventeen. So it, it's not compressing your timeline or changing your timeline. If you walked out of here with a recommendation today, you still sit around and wait until the seventeen. Or in two weeks, you get the recommendation, you still go to the ZVA.
The intention is to put you on the next planning board meeting.
Correct.
So you would have an answer from the planning's board.
Right.
Ahead of the ZVA meeting.
Right.
So you would either get an answer today, or you can answer two weeks, you still end up.
I'd say if there was changes to be made on our end, is my own.
I don't know that there's gonna be changes that need to do, because your variance request, unless you want to change your variance, your variance request is not gonna change. We just needed to check. Dates and how everything played out between two thousand and one and now. Sidewise, all that stuff, get, we just, we took out the variance to that, so.
Did, did they go out and verify the width and the height and everything now, so that the stuff? That we're, the information that we have is all correct for what's actually there, because previously, we didn't have all the. Correct measurements on the.
Nine point seven. So, yeah, yeah. Their, their team has gone and went out and dimensioned the exact existing conditions.
But we had a lot of, with Joe's. Point. Who owns the shrubs? The front side.
I believe that falls under the, uh. Whatever the name of the, of your general, that's general's.
So, so basically, if you lower that sign, you can't see the sign.
That's right.
It'll be blocked by the number. This is the same problem we had on the other side, remember?
But is that cur, is that currently blocked?
No.
No, because it's.
So, so the, the three feet head, the all the same three foot.
It's not, when you look at it there, it's not.
You have, you have to really come around it before.
I'll hire those shrubs now.
This is, this is pretty recent picture.
Yes, September twenty ninth.
What's the actual one, the hydro. And what was this supposed to be?
Six feet.
Six feet, yeah.
So it's.
Superfly, which is all right.
Where was it, so that's.
Over there. Eight foot two, eight foot two, they're right, right. After. All it's gonna be that way. Better. So just, just like you're asked, is, is it technically feasible to? Take a foot off each of those columns and you're not gonna have donuts anymore, right? So. And period, Duncan can shrink down to where donuts is and you take a foot off that. Without having to like.
So.
Tear the whole thing down.
Or you could burn it out.
But you compromise sort of.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't even think it's a compromise, it's, it's just saying comply with the original variance. That's, that's what it would be.
Could be, I mean.
To do what you're just.
The, the options that we have in front of us.
Well, I don't know if you can do two feet though.
So what, I mean, I'm gonna play devil's advocate for a second, what is, what's one foot over two foot? Alright, and maybe you're.
I mean.
You know what I mean, like.
Blocking the future neighbor signs or having roadway in come back to us the next time they're doing their sign and saying, hey. Our sign can't be seen from oncoming traffic because the Duncan sign is so big and so tall that it's blocking our sign, so we want our sign higher too. I mean, that's, that's what happens.
Yeah, we did discuss that, that problem with signs blocking other signs in.
Yeah.
You know, across the street, actually.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so like, that's, that's what happens in the future if somebody. Buys the land and they change it to, you know, Billy Bottom date and it's blocking roadway or. Then we have to deal with that.
You know, you do.
You were about to say.
Jerk around.
I just said burn.
Yes.
I said burn it out.
I think we really have kind of new options when we look at the requests, is to say, make a recommendation to ZVA based on the request. Or we ought to not make any sort of a recommendation. And leave it to ZVA and you still go to ZVA on seventeen, nothing changes there, but without a recommendation. Still gonna make your argument, ZVA, you just wouldn't have a recommendation.
Or. You recommend something else.
Right.
I'm inclined to agree with what Doug was saying, to bring in compliance, the old variance, the reason for that being. I hate to put another variance in there such that it just continues this poor situation.
Yeah.
Or it makes it worse.
Well, we're not adding another variance, we'd just be overly voiding the previous one.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking, we're, we're creating, it's, it's just one variance, but it's even worse than what our sign rules are now.
Right.
It's bad enough that the old variance is not compliant with, but if we can at least do that. Then when, we're not making it worse. Bad, it's not worse, that's what I'm thinking.
You know, looking at that, looking at the current pictures and everything, the grip definitely needs some repointing and stuff anyways, so. Now would be the right time to take it off and do the work, because the masonry isn't in excellent shape.
Those are the options that we have in front of us. You know, I think we can look at the dates, look at all that stuff.
Yeah, I'll get, I mean, I'll, I'll summarize the, the dates.
Yes.
Variants.
Yeah.
Actually, numbers are all there, you wanted to see the.
What's, what's the verbiage on the sign right now?
Apparently. Yeah, it's original.
But we said Duncan.
Just Duncan.
That's the two thousand, well, she was, the sign's already been changed once, right? Basically, yeah, at least a pay for it, right?
But we don't know when or under what circumstances.
Might as well put together a proposal to knock it down a couple feet.
And you, you can take like a foot and half off, shrink the sign. So the words are only at the top. That's sort of centered like that, and you could probably hit the, the six foot, you're never gonna get the square, can you get the square footage? Does it even line up? What's the width of it?
Well, twenty foot's allowed.
Eight four by four four.
Well, to understand also, it is a pylon sign.
They could put a little masonry or.
Again, I, I, again, I'm, I can get behind that because it was part of a, an approval of the variance. That's in the record from years ago, like, I get, I get that.
So, so you're, you're saying bringing into compliance with the variance, not with today's signs.
Correct, correct, with the variance that's in place, right? So if today, if we're not gonna table today, that was my motion, is that, if our recommendation is. That the ZVA does not approve the variance.
Fair.
That would be my motion.
Well, I think we're gonna, we're gonna table, because I want to get all the dates and all the other.
Should be, but.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion on this? I think we.
But the rest of the site, right, I think the rest of the project scope.
That's all, we're good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Are we, um. Is that ready for approval? The rest of the project in theory? I mean, say, we didn't do it, yeah, right, okay.
They, we, we need to correct the, the parking space dimensions, but other than that. Yes.
I mean, that can, that can, that can pre-stand if we wanted to finish that up, if it's ready for the next meeting. As well.
Yep, we can do that too.
Would, would that be helpful in approval for the rest of it?
And so, just so I understand, can I apply for a permit for that scope and leave the sign out of it pending further ZVA approval and all that?
I, well, I just forgot.
There's not really one application. So I don't think we can let it.
Because the sign is included in that, um.
We, we made resolutions on the site, right?
Yeah, I know, but it's all.
But he split it up, I think is what he's saying.
Yes, that is exactly.
Yeah, he wants to know if he can put in another thing just for the other word, like to take out the sign.
But I think it's an ad hoc, it's a statement, it's a non-conformance, it's essentially a code violation.
Right.
The signs are not in compliance.
Site plan, you know, would be approved.
And that needs some correction.
With the condition that.
Yeah.
It's corrected.
If, if you want us to remove the rest of the site at the next meeting, we could, we could do that, we're fine, um, we could do that.
I mean, it's.
We wouldn't need dollars, and I'm just kidding.
Half of it would have been sold.
Hold on, I think.
Well, we can say.
But we can figure all of this out, guys, I don't know that we need to hatch out how we.
I believe, we should have, we should have remembered the note on it, that the sign isn't part of it.
Yep. So. Except for now.
We can be, go through that one more time, so am I allowed or am I not allowed to split the rest of the project off of the sign and submit another application to get that going? Leaving the sign out of it?
I think what we're saying is we don't need to, well, I mean.
Well, I think a lot of this is.
We're gonna figure that out.
Yes, we can, we will figure out the method for that to happen if that's.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Wonderful. I look forward to it, thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Confuse you at this point.
Are they like, want the sign just like that, they don't want to change it? Because like to move it along the fastest, I think it would be, give the owner a proposal to drop the sign down to six foot. And tell him, okay, we could spend this much money and have it done, or we can go to the ZVA to keep it up at the eight foot two.
He's.
I mean.
His interest is time and money, so.
So, time is money, so I'm just telling you, that's the other option given.
I was directed that this was the course of action that was probably of least resistance back a couple weeks ago, so this is the route we took. I will, uh, reconvene with the owner tomorrow and go wait to hear Eric's answer on splitting the project up.
Yeah, but otherwise, the whole project could go together if you were in compliance with the original thing, if it were at six foot, right?
Well, the sign.
Did you do the six foot, you can't fix the width unless he takes it down.
Right, he's gotta change the, the sign's face.
Right.
Right.
But he has, he's changing the sign in any way.
Yeah, it's a, it's a box sign in between, so blue hole center.
He had a variance, he was, he was thirty, thirty one point eight, he said thirty six point one.
Whether it is to unattach it from the concrete and drop it down.
Because that Duncan square is too large, right?
Yeah.
It has to get smaller.
Even for the other ten times.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's. You have to.
Sorry. I thought it was.
Look forward to, have a good night.
Thank you. No, but yeah, I get.
Coming on a sign.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, back on track here. Last, uh, God, had we used business bar.
Don't lose it.
Yeah.
Yes, we need that back. Yeah.
Or Eric.
So.
Yes. We don't want to lose that.
You already took a picture of it.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Alright, so. Steve, we'd like to kind of have you give us an update of what your thoughts are, this is just a conceptual review, so we kind of want to hear. What your thoughts, what your plans, what it, you know, it's supposed to look like, um, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Okay, so can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um. We wanna have, uh. A food trailer become our kitchen basically on the backside of our building to support the low volume. Mentee bar we have there. And, you know, we're designing it to look like it's. Sheathed the same way as the building and it will be permanent.
Know the other one. The square to max it.
See the.
I'm just curious, yeah, where is it on the site?
That little red box. Red box. Right there.
Right in the back of the building.
What's up, is it attached to the building or?
No.
No.
No, there's a swing gate, as it stands right now. Swing gate with a trailer. You know, food truck trailer backs in behind a, a fence made to gear a permanent nature. Um, you know. I think that you, you've kind of given us the rundown, is, is it, it's serving the whiskey bar?
Correct. Correct.
Our hesitation certainly is, you know, first off, that it can't be mobile, it has to be permanent.
That's why we, we engineered it to be permanently affixed to the bedrock.
How is it permanently affixed to the bedrock?
We're gonna have plates, we're drilling down and we're gonna bolt it down.
Is that like a party box essentially? Is it?
No, it's a, it's a food truck trailer. It's got, you know, wheels, a, a tow tongue. Yeah, I mean.
Is that what that skirt board is around the base, is to cover up the?
Yeah.
The wheels and all that, yeah, and so you can see the, the tongue and the gate. Up at the top.
Right. So are the wheels coming off of it? Steve, are the wheels coming off of it entirely?
Um, I didn't think of that, but, um. That, that needs to be part of the process.
Well, how are you attaching it if the wheels aren't coming off?
Plates on the side of the trailer and the frame.
That still needs some mobile posting down.
So, um, foundation models, how does that work? For a building.
At least what I'm seeing there is it looks like a plate that's being anchored to the bedrock, the post that's.
That's for the sheeting of the trailer.
Oh, that's for the sheeting.
Yeah, so that, this same effect will be going with the trailer as well.
Which that is an explanation for a building that, that would.
So the. The permanency. You know, when we've addressed things like this in the past, you know, whether it be. Docked, you know, it's like mobile dock, has to be a permanent nature, has to be sitting on a foundation.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, um, I'm not sure that just putting a plate and bolting it down. Qualifies. As, as a foundation, as creating that permanency.
I mean, that also begs the question too, so if you've got, I mean, you're saying that you've got bedrock or you've got exposed ledge, you're gonna sit right on top of it. Then I kind of ask, so what are we doing about? Domestic water sanitation, how's that being routed from this trailer to even meet those requirements? Um, but, so what are you doing?
It, it's self-contained, um, it has potable water and wastewater, which would be removed and then a whip would be installed to the building so that it can be plugged in. It's self-contained.
I don't, yeah, okay, so from a building code point of view, I, I, I don't think that that complies.
I don't either.
So that, to me, that's not a. So that, to me, that's not a permanent structure then.
Right.
The whip is temporary. Yeah.
Right. Is that, is the blue what's being shown up there right now, like a roll-up door?
Yeah, two hatch doors around there.
So people run the whiskey bar, walk outside, they walk up to the. Trailer and get food?
Yes. Or they would be served. From the trailer into the bar.
Outdoor seating?
Yeah, is there any outdoor seating that you intend?
We already have a deck and a fire patio.
Steve, is this open to the public or just if you have events?
It's open to the public, but we have a very low volume model.
Is this open to the floor at all, could people hear? Questions?
Uh, I'm sorry, can you repeat?
I'm just wondering if it's open.
Yeah.
People to interject and ask questions.
We have not advertised for public hearing.
Okay.
At this point, this is kind of a.
Could be here then?
No, you can be here, this, I mean, this is a public meeting, you can be here, but in terms of hosting a, a public meeting, we haven't advertised to.
Right behind him. And the noise is loud. And I bought the house, now to the quiet.
Yeah, I'd be curious, Steve, what the long-term plan, I'm sorry. So I think what we can do, and, and the only reason I'm, I'm kinda. Halting this a little bit is be, is. For fairness to other people that haven't been notified. So I think what we can do. Is our board can call for a public hearing. To give a forum to the public to speak. But if I, if I allow it today and other neighbors that weren't aware that, you know, you guys were here to speak. Causes issues, so.
Spoke to about six neighbors, three of whom can't be here, one's on his way.
Right, which is, which is fair, and I, and I, believe me, I wanted to hear all the comments.
They could expand. I wouldn't like having a catered party basically in my backyard.
Understood. Understood, so what I think. As part of this, what I think we can do is call for a public hearing, because I think with the, yes?
Yes.
With the function that is going on, you know, with the expanded use, um, in there, I think it is fair. To have the public.
Yeah, I have one other question, my, my neighbor was telling me, he said when the building was first built. Uh, it was supposed to be a warehouse, maximum of two people, they can buy five pe- five P M every day. Now it's getting bigger, bigger, bigger. I mean, it's, it's a big property, you could be a full-size restaurant if it's approved. I'm worried about my. Piece of land.
Yep.
The neighborhood behind me, it's self-contained, so it affects everybody there. The smell. I mean. Everybody breathes the same air.
Yeah, I would say, you know, gather all of these thoughts, we'll, we'll call for.
And, and you can also send written comments anytime.
People have already asked to sign petition.
Right, this is the first, so this is a concept review, the board has not seen this project. This is the first.
Yeah, I, I, I just found out three hours ago.
No, I'm good. And, and, and this, this came in, it's going through its usual course, it's coming to the board here for the first time, most everyone here is seeing this for the first time. So, these are legitimate questions and. Now the chair seems to think that a public hearing would be uh in line, there's some technical things it sounds like about the. Permanency of it.
And I think that might be a department finding, but I think it forms, to me, it'll form. From a coach.
And then if you add a permanent structure, you have to consider what additional parking is required to. Provide, you know, what setbacks are needed, what? All of those other things.
I mean, let's say it, there's a scenario where, I mean, again, to hear the applicant. Out completely, but they're proposing, because that's what we're doing.
Right.
Uh, aside from the permanent versus temporary nature, let's say it is, it's redesigned and, and built in such a way that it's permanent. What, what does that mean then for the rest of the review of the project in terms of? The increased occupant load and the parking load and so on, so I don't, I'm not sure that you've actually talked about or addressed those yet. So. Do you want to kind of finish your presentation or are you? All done?
Well, I mean, I, I wasn't even in it. Uh, the public speaking before I do, so again, um.
Just so you know, it was mostly us on the board talking.
I, I, I could, I could hear it all, so, you know, I, I, again, I, I, I'm gonna voice my frustration because I just went, what I went through in the last twelve months. Um, most of my neighbors, if they have a concern, which is very limited, we have been a target from a few people in the community for. Twenty years since I've been out there. We take great pride in what we do, we are low volume on all my companies, the noise level is very controlled. Um, I think there's just kind of a, a situation where. No matter what I do, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna come after it, and again, we had to prove through. A quite a bit amount of threat to closing my businesses and. Produce more funds to showcase that we were in compliance with everything. Um, to have this come up and then to have the public there being able to speak already is. Is frustrating, it's discouraging, it's disappointing. Um. I think. I'd rather be there in person, this is the first time I've ever, I've ever zoomed, and it. I've never had somebody from the public speak against me in a public forum, they do it, you know, where it's anonymous and. Um, I don't like the, the, the advantage that, that the advantage is going on right now that I'm not there and someone's speaking up from. Who could be, who could be, who could be a continuing complainer about my property that has cost me.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to.
I understand what you're trying to do, but the, the statements were made, you know, to the point where there's a threat of a petition, so I mean, there's accountability on both sides of the fence. And by the way, the fence I built from, the, the fence I. The, the fence that I built for my neighbors when I first went up there twenty years ago is thirty-five feet high and cost me thirty thousand dollars, so I'm a good neighbor. And by the way, we maintain most of our neighbors. So I don't know where this neighbor lives, if, if it's the same person that lives up on Taylor Road, all the way up on the end, that's about one point six miles away. You know, so, some of these things are created, they create hardship. Um, I, it just, I'm not gonna go on a rant for an hour, but they are creating situations that cost us a great deal of money. And hardship. When we bring a lot to the community, and you know, there's a time where this needs to be addressed on both sides.
Let's, let's talk about the project in hand. Right now.
That is the project in hand, that, that's all part of it.
Well. Help us to understand more about what your intent is with.
Our intent, our, our intent is to not increase any volume. Increase any noise, but support what we already have in a better way. There is no increase in parking, we already have proven that we have more than enough parking for what our uses are on the property. This is just to enhance the deliverance and not to great, create a bigger business. Period.
Is the, is the current whiskey bar operations, is that mostly inside?
And now it's. Yes, no, we have inside, we have a, we have a deck and we have a small fire pit patio, but it's, it's low volume. And it, the thing is, no one even knew it was there, I mean, again, I've asked people to come to the property to take a look at it and thankfully. Um, the new director of planning zoning, the new planner, they, they're very agreeable, they, they're a lot easier to work with than. What I, I have personally been handling for years with the board, and no one even knows there's a bar back there.
So, what does low volume mean?
Uh, mass capacity is maybe fifty, sixty on a night with, you know, within two turns. Huh? You know, we have a simulator business in there, the, the, the bar, you know, facilitates food and drinks for the people that are in the simulator playing golf. Again, these are attractions to the town, uh, on a very high quality level and a very low volume base. It, it, and, and, and it's designed, I, I am all, again, I'm going to remind everybody. I am all about privacy and quality, if you drive by my property, it's quality produced. It's maintained at the highest level. And I don't even have signs on my buildings, we don't mark it. So, it, it. There's, there's ways to, to, to help both sides, and I think I've done my part with the community. Ten times over.
Steve, we're getting down to the bottom. You know, what we need to discuss around this food, you know, service space, I'm not gonna call it a truck anymore because food trucks are not allowed. So, become permanent in nature.
Yes.
Right, we, if we talk about that, I'm not sure that. Just putting a plate down and bolting it to the bedrock is considered permanent nature, to Doug's point, there are other items that we're gonna need to talk about in there.
That's fine, I'm agree, I'm agreeable with that.
Understanding now what your intent is, I mean, you're, are you, you're not. Hosting any concerts or outdoor parties or, I mean, the, the business is. The whiskey bar and golf.
Wait, no, we, we do, we do birthday parties, we do corporate, you know, retreats, things like that, low volume. Um, we, we do have live music inside, it's all spray foamed, it's all soundproofed. You know, I've walked to the corner, the first night we had music playing inside the building, I walked the boundaries of my property, nothing. And, and, and remember, my, 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 my closest neighbor is, my closest. My closest neighbor, my closest, hold on one second, my closest neighbor is three acres away. With a thirty-five foot berm. There's a lot of noise control that, there's, there's not noise. It's easy to say there's a lot of noise being produced out of my building. You know, I listened to my neighbors, we were gonna build a turf building, an interior turf building to service the needs of J D F M. And the local communities, all the way out to Skinny Atlas, that have an indoor practice facility. I talked to two of my neighbors that I'm very good with, and I have one other pop in my building, you know, and I said, what do you think? And the one that popped in my building was against it, and he's the immediate neighbor behind me, and I, I came to a grants that. We weren't gonna pursue that because of the traffic pattern, we even want low traffic going in there.
Steve.
Yes.
Looking to build that still?
No.
Then let's get back on track.
No, no, I, I am on track.
No, no, I know, I get it, but let's get back on track. Are you, are you putting in a trailer with wheels or are you gonna come back on our next meeting with advanced drawings? That have a little bit different. Uh, permanent structure?
Well, I would have to sit down with. The town to see exactly what they would like to see. I have no prob, I'm agreeable with. Collaboration, I'm agreeable with taking wheels off, but I need, again, it's on bedrock, so.
The wheels are off right now.
The use is allowed.
I'm not quite sure we have a full understanding of what the use is, but it's.
If it was permanent, not on wheels.
It's a, it's makes it a restaurant.
Right, because.
I, I think so, I think in that area.
The, the use is allowed because we already have a kitchen, we can't. You can't have a liquor license in New York State without serving food. Again, this is all, went through, we went through all this in October, November, December, January, February this year.
So I think, Steve, based, based on now the understanding of. What your intent is, so is that? Blue, a big roll-up door, people are gonna walk up there, we're gonna have a line of people standing there to get food while they're, you know, playing golf or.
No, the intention is to serve our clientele from that. But we are not gonna sit there and say that we don't wanna say, you know, it's, it's, it's a sunny day and we have people from the bar going. Sitting on a deck going over to get a smash burger or something.
So what we need to do on our end is we need to not only look at use compatibility, but code interpretations for permanency. You know, any D O A requirements, I think we need to figure out. What this looks like now knowing exactly what your intent is, and we'll work with you to figure out what. What that looked like. Moving forward.
Can I ask a question?
No, 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 the, the question will be. Received when we do our public hearing, so we're gonna call for a public hearing and allow the public an opportunity to, to speak. Today and today.
When is that gonna be?
Well, that's.
It's gonna be the next time that he comes in with better drawings and we'll make sure that.
I'm much satisfied by this planning and zoning office, when that will be.
Okay, but the. The zone wouldn't. Originally, when he built the building. It was a warehouse.
Said this before you got here, please.
Let's bring the question when we have.
Can I, can I ask, can I ask a quick question? Um, if everyone knows who I am, do, am I allowed to know who's asking questions from the public?
They signed in, you can look at the sign-in sheet.
When we, when we do that, I don't, I, I wanna keep this focused right now, this is a conceptual presentation, we, this is our opportunity to figure out. What he's looking to do, what is going on there, we will hold a public hearing, so. The public will have an opportunity to speak and to ask the questions of this board of the office. If you have other questions, please, by all means, write them down, send them to Alana or Eric in the office.
The, well, if you're on the list, we'll get, make sure the public hearing notice is sent to everyone on the list, even if you're not within the usual. Expanse.
Right.
So Steve, some of the things that I look at when I see it is. How does that meet the energy code, having a fully open front? Uh, how does it meet the building code not having a foundation? How does it meet a egress? Uh, where is the three-bay sink for food prep? Uh, like, all of those things come to mind, but none of that is detailed, so I don't have any of those answers. And those are some of the things that I think of when I see this.
Okay, I completely understand that, um, we can produce uh CAD drawings and things that are more specific, understanding this was a concept meeting. Um, we are. Yeah, no, no, I, I, I get it, but I just, you know, again, we're old-fashioned, we hand draw, so we will produce the necessary documents beyond the concept, beyond us. Talking to you and figuring out all those details, um, so that we're all in agreement.
Steve, does the county health department approve this as?
A hundred and ten percent.
So what is your timeline? Steve, what's your timeline for? You know, when you'll have some of this stuff ready?
So, we will do that quickly, but I like to meet first before we produce the documents, so I mean, I like to have. A, a checklist where we can go down and have a collaboration and see what you need provided, and then. Make sure that that's all, you know, agreeable to the site and the function of it and the engineering of it, and then we could produce that within two days.
Well, a workshop meeting has more.
Once we have it, yes.
Yeah.
So I think, you guys, you guys can work with Steve ahead of time. Once we get updated materials, then we can have an internal work section. You know, once we have more materials, then we'll call for public hearing, have an opportunity, you know, they'll, the public will have the opportunity to view the materials as well.
You signed in, so they'll get ahold of you specifically, right? Isn't that how it worked in the past?
So.
So Steve, we'll, we'll talk to Derek. And then we'll give you a copy.
I, I hear multiple voices, so I don't, I don't, is someone directing something towards me, I'm sorry.
Um, we're gonna talk to Derek and then I'm gonna have you talk to him as far as like the building code requirements and, and all of that to, to ensure that. All of those come from that.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
Alright, so then in terms of process.
Yeah.
Build point here. Um. This being the conceptual review. We've given him comments and our initial feedback on that, and he's been challenged with, you know, updating what he is providing us. We will then get that material in. After coordination with the planning and zoning office. You know, once they feel like that is substantial and. Where they are coming to us, we will hold a work session internally to meet with the. The applicant, at the same time, we'll call.
The work sessions are public.
Yes, the work sessions are public, we will call for a public hearing as well and a planning board meeting. Uh, where people will be notified within the, the appropriate radius, as well as if you've signed in here. Um, that will be the opportunity for the public to speak and ask questions.
But wait, wait, one second, the work sessions are public, but they're not open for questions and comments. But wait, wait, one second, the work sessions are public, but they're not open for questions and comments?
Correct.
The questions and comments would then come at the. Public hearing. Just so everybody knows.
Or writing in advance.
Correct.
Anytime.
Where should I set my writing in advance?
To Alana. Planning and zoning department.
They can, they can have my email too if they wanna write me directly.
And they just. Right for the public hearing. And they notice.
Yeah, no.
Steve, you wanna submit your contact?
Steve, did you hear Alana? Do you want us to share your contact information if people would like it?
I would love to, because there's no better educator than talking to the person in charge.
Okay.
A lot, a lot of things can happen when people talk to each other, not. Around the backside.
That's where we stand, this is the very first step in this whole process, um. You know, we look forward to the dialogue and we look forward to working it out. Um, you know, it's good to hear what the intent is versus just looking at a drawing.
Understood.
So. That being said.
Sounds good.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, appreciate it.
The process.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You're clear on the process?
Yes, sir.
Right. Um, alright, so then I'm going to end that. End the session. Nope. Yeah, so thank you, Steve, work with Alana and Eric and. You know, we'll look forward to seeing you at some point here in the future.
Alright, you know, have a great night, thank you.
You too.
Thanks, Steve.
Alright.
Any other business? No? Gavin, you want to close the meeting?
Sure.
Second?
Third.
Favor.
I know.